All right, welcome. Welcome, everyone, to Church for All Nations District, School District 49, School Board Forum. As many of you know, we have school board elections this upcoming November. Ballots will drop on October 16th. October 16th. And so, we wanted to get out ahead of it and give you an opportunity to get to meet some of the candidates. Understand, please, that we did invite all of the candidates for District 49. These are the three that have accepted. So, we're very grateful for them. If you don't mind, give them a hand. All right, my name is Ken Davis, and I'll be moderating today's forum. But I wanted to go through a few announcements really quick. Is there anyone in the building right now that has never been inside this building? Oh, well, then, you all know where the bathrooms are. So, that's great. So, the one thing I would ask of you, if you have one of these, a smart or dumb version of one of these, please put it on silent or vibrate so it does not disturb us with your Three's Company ringtone. So, please, keep it silent. We will give you an opportunity later as those in the audience to ask questions of the members, the candidates that are running for school board. That text number, it is a text, is on the screen right now. If you need to text a question, and you're also part of the online audience, here is how you get your question to me. So, please make note of that. That will, I will let you know when we will begin receiving those text questions as well. Childcare, if there's anyone here that has children that are currently in childcare, childcare will end promptly at 8:30. So, at 8:30, you do need to leave this room, go grab your kiddos. And if you need to, you can bring them back in here. Hopefully, they don't hawk them all up on chocolate and candy. So, they shouldn't be too restless. In fact, hopefully, they're sleepy. So, they'll come in, and they'll be nice and quiet when we bring them in. So, we always open up with prayer and the pledge allegiance. Thank you for those that recognize the United States as the greatest nation on the face of the planet.
Amen.
So... Yeah, I've got a cheering squad out there for those of you in the online audience. So, if you don't mind, let's all please stand as we first pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this opportunity to come together. We thank you, Father, for these candidates, those who have chosen to give of their life, their time, and their sacred honor to run for school board. And so, we just ask, Father, that you will bless each and every one of them as we go through this forum. I thank you, Father, that everything that they say will reveal how they will govern as part of the school board. And so, Lord, as we prepare to go into this night, we thank you that your Holy Spirit is here with us, guiding and directing everything that we do. We pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen. Now, turn and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so, really quick, this is how the forum will go. I've already mentioned texting questions. So, we will ask each of the candidates a question. All of them will get the same question. There are seven of them. They will have two minutes to answer those seven questions so that there's no confusion in the order in which I'm going to do this. But I'd also like to give each one of them an opportunity to speak first. We will begin with Ms. Deb Schmidt with the first question. And we would just go straight down the line. For question two, we will begin here in the middle, go to Raylene, come back to Deb. Third question, we'll begin with Raylene, come back to Deb, and back to the middle. To Marie. Forgive me, Marie. You're welcome. I'm actually getting ready to introduce all three of you with last names included. So, forgive me, Marie. So, directly to my left is Deborah Schmidt. To the left of her is Marie Lavier Wright. And to the left of her is Raylene Rovord. And prayerfully, because her husband's here, I said that correctly because, you know, it's his name, too. I practiced that one before we started tonight. And so, that is how the opening questions will go. Then, we will take questions. It is simply agree or disagree. These are questions that came from the Truth and Liberty Voter Guide. Those are available in the back. So, we will take, we will ask each of them those questions. Some of them have already responded, but we want to give everyone an opportunity to hear their responses to those questions. That will take literally maybe two minutes. Then, we'll open it up for all of you to ask questions. We're good? Okay. Well, let's get into it. Oh, and I almost missed one. So, there's also the Church Voter Guides. Those, there are cards on the back, but those guides will be available online as of Sunday. So, you can take a card to at least have the website, churchvoterguide.org. And then, on Sunday, as of Sunday, you'll be able to get online and check those out as well. All right? Let's get into it. And we'll begin with Deborah Schmidt. How long have you lived in the district?
For 25, for 25 years.
Marie?
18 years.
Seven years.
Okay. Back to Marie. Do you personally have children who attend or have attended schools within the district?
Yes, I do. I have four children. One has graduated from Falcon High completely. One is currently in the 18 to 21 Transitions Program. Two are currently students at Falcon High School. And in the 15 years I've had kids in the district, they've attended schools in three different zones and five of the six coordinated schools in the Falcon Zone.
Awesome. And Raylene?
I am a mom of four. I have two kids that are currently in D-49 and two that are out of school.
All right, kind of a bonus question here, if you don't mind. Some folks here may not understand that District 49 is broken up into director districts. So, we'll just, we'll start with Deb on this one. Just quickly tell us which director district you are running for.
Director District 2, it's the pink one, if you've seen the map that I have on the back table there.
Marie?
Director District 3, which is predominantly the Falcon Zone.
Director District 3, and it's the green on the map.
Okay, the map is on the back, if you are confused at all. And it shows you the borders along with the street names. All right, next question, we will begin with Raylene. Oh, my gosh, we didn't, that's right, we didn't round robin. Deb, sorry, any children in the district? Thank you.
No, mine are both grown and gone through college, and they're busy in their own careers and their family lives.
Okay. Now, Raylene. What previous experience do you have in the district, either employment, volunteer, or other?
Yes, so, I have lived in our district for seven years. I, like I said, I have two kids that are currently in D-49 schools. I currently am on a charter board and have been a part of that school for six years. My husband and I are small business owners, and we have done a lot of community involvement in our area and just a lot of volunteering and events.
Deborah?
Yeah, I was a kitchen manager in the district at Springs Ranch Elementary School for a couple of years. I was in the kitchens on and off basically for 16 years in the district. I found it really enlightening because the kids come, and they're hungry, and they're talkative, and you learn a lot. So, that's kind of, and, oh, I'm also on the Cultural Leadership Advisory Committee and trying to make sure that everything goes pretty well there. That's it.
I've been involved, actually, since the day we moved here because I taught at Falcon High School for three years. When we adopted our four children from the foster system, I stopped teaching and started volunteering. I've been on the preschool council. I was one of the founding parent members of the Special Education Advisory Council and am still a parent member on that. I'm a part of the Enhanced Security Community Advisory Council. I'm currently president of the Falcon High PTSA. I helped restart the Falcon High Student School Accountability Committee. I'm a member of the Falcon Coalition. I volunteered in classrooms all the way through elementary school. I was on the wellness committee, and I served eight years previously on the school board.
All right, excellent. Deborah? Here's the next question. How often have you attended school board meetings?
I've been, I've been going pretty much for two and a half years. Something came up in March, so I haven't been to one since March. But pretty much for two years, watching how the process happens, speaking about issues that I'm interested in. And, yeah, about two, two and a half years.
Marie?
Well, I attended every single one, the eight years I was on the board. I had perfect attendance. But since I was off the first two years and into COVID, I stepped back purposefully because I didn't want to influence in any way what the next board was doing. I thought, as a leader, it's important to take a step back and allow the next group to lead. And then, started attending again once COVID restrictions were loosened and spoke a couple of times as a parent, including filing a couple of stakeholder grievances with the district over some issues that happened with my own children. So, and then, have also just attended as a community member to make sure I was staying informed pretty frequently. Not every single meeting, but quite a few of them since the COVID restrictions for attendance have lifted. Those I haven't attended, I have frequently watched from home, either live or afterwards.
For numbers, I don't have a count. Most of the board meetings that I attend are virtual. I stream them and watch them. I have young kids, and we are always on the go, going places, doing extracurricular activities. But I do go back and watch the meetings.
Excellent. Marie, we'll begin with you. What particular issue motivates you to want to serve on the school board?
I believe in our community. I've invested quite a bit of time and effort and tears. I helped build some of the things that have been at the heart of that, including our cultural compass, the very first strategic plan. All of those things were built during my tenure on the board through some really difficult times in the beginning. And I am still very committed to this community. When my husband picked his last station of duty before retiring, we chose here to raise our children. And I'm all about continuing to support that community and ensuring that we continue to move forward. The learning loss, both developmentally and academically, that our students experienced during COVID is concerning. And we need our community to unite around our schools instead of continuing to find reasons to attack them. They need our help, our support, and our encouragement and our engagement. And I'm successfully helping with that as I can as a parent. That was restarting the PTSA, restarting the SAC and getting it reinvigorated at Falcon High. But I can continue to do that at a better level at the board, especially with the depth of experience I bring to the table.
I chose to run for the school board because ultimately, I am concerned about our country. I love America, and I love our kids. And they are generally, not generally, they are our future of this country. I am very passionate about our community. We've had, our families had a lot of involvement in our community. I love our state. I'm a native to Colorado. And I want, I want to respect our parents. I want to make sure that we are securing the same opportunities and liberties that we have had for the future of our country.
My big three are partnering with parents, transparency, and curriculum. And I think as far as partnering with parents, we have to value that rock that talks about how all people are valued and trust. And then, with transparency, we really need to see a little bit more. There's a lot of stuff kind of hidden. And then, curriculum, there's a few things I'd like to see, American history, real good American history with, yeah, we got failures, but we have a lot of achievements, a lot of really good American achievements. And I think we need to definitely talk our country up a little bit more than what is being talked up.
Raylene, you'll take this one first. What do you, what do you feel are essential attributes for a school board member?
So, I feel the most important thing for a school board is accountability, making sure that what we have in place is being practiced in our schools. I also feel that it is an opportunity to represent our community, represent our taxpayers, our parents, and our families, and being able to collaborate with our teachers, hear our teachers, our other board members to come up with a plan and put into action to make sure our kids are coming out of our schools proficient, which is the ultimate goal for schools. And is what we owe to our kids is to make sure they're coming out of our schools with an education proficient, proficiency, and just being able to be a voice for our community.
Deb?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Sure. What do you feel are essential attributes for a school board member?
I think a school board member needs to listen to everyone. Now, as a school board member, you are one of five, and you can't make decisions unilaterally by any means. But listen and try and speak for the people that are talking to you. And if they feel very strongly about a certain issue, we should be discussing that a little bit. So, I think listening is the biggest attribute.
I think the first attribute is integrity because everything flows from integrity. When you have integrity, you then treat everyone equally, and people can trust that what you say, you mean. I think it's important to be someone who listens to all voices, not just the loudest voices, and not just the ones that may align with your own belief system. And I think that that also means listening to our entire community. And I, that can be a very difficult thing to do. There are some groups on all political areas that have a, in both extremes, I would say, that only listen to the voices that they agree with. That's not who our community is. That doesn't serve our children. I think accountability is also important. That starts by the board modeling it by holding one another accountable. It follows by making sure that we are accountable to what our community expects. And that, again, means listening to all voices, not just the loudest, not the one that is the most obnoxious. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to ask the last question that I have. But before I do so, there are a few people I'd like to bring note to that are in the room. Our current board members, John Graham, if you don't mind standing when I call your name, Lori Thompson, Jamie Lynn DeVola, and Ivy Lu. Please stand. And so, please, give, these are your, these are the current board members. Some of them will no longer be on the board, but I wanted to recognize them because they are here supporting their school district, the school district that they serve. And so, serving is not the easiest thing. And these are the folks who've stepped up to serve this school district because we actually are currently sitting in School District 49. All right, so, last question from me, at least of the seven. This one, we will begin with Deb, Deborah Schmidt. What core life values guide your decision-making?
God, family, and country.
Kept that simple. I'll tell you what, I think this is an important question. So, if you would like, I am going to take liberty, and you have three minutes to answer this question. Is there anything you'd like to add, Deborah?
I got to tell you, I'm really committed to my grandkids. And I'm very moved at some of the things that they come home from school and ask me about. They're very controversial things. I don't like what I hear. I think if we could do some academics, some good academics, and stop with all this fluffing stuff, I think our kids would, you know, do better. Yes, I realize there are parents out there that do not do a lot of character development with their children. But that does not mean that a state-sponsored education can just move in and say whatever they want to say. Some of the stuff is social justice, some of it is furries, and I just... I can't abide that. My kids, my grandkids need to have a decent education. If you can't read and you can't write, who's going to be the next brain surgeon? Or the next cancer specialist? Or the next rocket scientist? Or the next person to figure out how we're going to all have water to drink? We've got to have education. We don't need this other stuff.
Go ahead, Marie.
My faith is the core of who I am, and those who truly know me know that. And from my faith, the most profound thing I have, other than my personal relationship with Christ, is a profound respect for the sacredness and dignity for every single person because every single person was created by God. And everything I do from, in my life stems from that belief and then comes from believing that if I truly live my faith, I have to live it by action. And that's where, first and foremost, my husband and I probably connected, was over our commitment to service to others that has followed through our 29 years of marriage and his full military career and our adoption of our children from the foster system and volunteering in my community, both at my church and at my children's schools in every capacity I could. When I was a graduate student, way back in the day, when I thought I wanted to be a research scientist, I found myself volunteering at the hospital because I needed human connection. And that was a part of what helped me realize that I needed to do something other than work in a lab alone. But where I volunteered was at Brigham and Women's on the Bone Marrow Unit. And I volunteered there because, as a Catholic Christian, something that's very important to us is the liturgy of the Eucharist. And most chaplains were afraid to go to the bone marrow unit because you had to scrub your skin to make sure you weren't going to bring germs to them. You had to cover yourself with all kinds of protective, personal protective equipment. So, you looked like what we now look like with COVID, right? And then, I would walk in to a family who had to stay separated from one another with a consecrated host that had been autoclaved to make sure that it was sterile. And then, I led prayer with those families at this profound moment when this person didn't, was praying the bone marrow transplant would work because if it didn't, they would die. You can't live without an immune system. And that was profound for me, to be able to be present to those families in those moments and knowing, not understanding why others were so afraid of it, but also just knowing that I could be that to someone else. That helped me shift what I was doing and was why I then eventually became a teacher at a Catholic school in Boston until my son, my husband, was restationed. That has been literally what drives me each time, is looking in saying, am I respecting that piece of my faith?
I am first and foremost a Christian. I use my Bible as my compass and the foundation of my life. I teach my kids this. It's the foundation of my family. And I believe and base my decisions and moral decisions out of what God's word says. I am also an American. I'm a proud American. I love this country more than anything. And that's why I decided to run. I, I want to fight for this country, for our kids, my kids, the future generations to come. I, you know, I believe that our parents are the foundations of our kids' lives. We want in our schools our kids to get a good academic education. We want our parents to be the foundation of the values from the home. And I have had concerns, just even as a parent, even if I wasn't running for a district board, just concerns of the future of our country. What direction are we going? The direction that we're going to go is the direction that our youth is being taught right now. And I feel it's important to make sure that our American values are taught to our kids, that they get an education in our schools, but that their families are the foundation of their values and the root of their values. So, those are, those are my main things. I'm a Christian. I'm an American. I love my country. I love my community, and I'm going to keep fighting for it.
Okay, I'd like to clean up a couple of things really quickly. So, for those that don't know, District 49 went through some redistricting. And due to that redistricting, Ivy Lu is a former board member. I think I probably offended someone by calling her a current board member, you know, because I'm so PC. With that being said, I want to apologize to Marie. I don't want you to think in any way, shape, or form. That is a representation of what we allow here. That is a, there's a reason the person did so as exiting the room because everyone who's been here before knows that I was going to threaten the whole room to not do that again. So, I'm joking. I'm joking. I wasn't going to threaten you all. Not really. But we don't allow that, right? This is, we want to respect everyone who's up here. Again, they're willing to sacrifice their time, their energy, and potentially time that they could be making an income to run for school board. And for that, we totally respect what they're ready to give to their community. And so, I think Marie said it quite eloquently. Everyone up here is a child of the Lord, is a child of God. And so, we want to respect them as such. Okay? All right, so, rapid fire, before we get into the text questions. As I mentioned before, I'm going to go through the Truth and Liberty... Ready? All right, Truth and Liberty Election Guide. Everyone except for one has their answers posted here, so you can grab one. But we want to give everyone an opportunity. This is simply, and you may want to hold your mic because this is going to be quick, that you are simply to either say agree or disagree. Okay? Teachers have the right to refer to a student according to the pronoun corresponding to the student's biological sex at birth.
Disagree.
Can you repeat that?
Sure. Teachers have the right to refer to a student according to the pronoun corresponding to the student's biological sex at birth.
I said that wrong.
Do go ahead if you need to. Change your answer.
I think they should be called by the pronoun they were, with the gender they were born with.
Okay.
I think they should follow whatever the parent tells them to call their child.
Okay. Raylene?
I believe they should be called by what they were born as.
All right. Marie, you're taking this one next. Biological males should be allowed to compete in girls' sports.
That is beyond the scope of a school board. So, I'm not going to answer a question that I do not have control over as a school board member.
Raylene?
Can you restate the question?
Sure. Biological males should be allowed to compete in girls' sports.
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not as well.
Okay, Raylene, you will take this one first. Sex education should be age-appropriate, emphasizing the abstinence-based model.
Agree.
Agree.
It should be age-appropriate and allow parents to opt in to the knowledge they want their child exposed to at that age.
All right, and back to you, Deborah. School is not a replacement for parents, and parents have the right to direct the education and upbringing of their children, including the right to see records, curriculum, and tests, and to be notified and consent before their child receives advice, referrals, therapy, examination, or treatment related to mental or physical health and medical, gender, and sexuality issues.
I agree with the Supreme Court that says that that is our job.
I 100% agree.
100 agree.
Okay. All right, last one, and Marie will start this one. The United States is not systemically and fundamentally racist, and students should not be taught that people are automatically privileged or oppressed based on their race or skin color.
As the adoptive parent of a non-white child, I 100% agree.
Agree.
As the grandparent of biracial children, I agree.
Okay. All right, you guys ready to hear your questions? If you sent me a psycho one in... If you sent me a psycho one in, you already know how this works. I'm just saying. Okay. All right, what will you, and we'll begin, sort of, we end off with, we ended with Marie, so we'll begin with Raylene. What will you do to ensure students always have the freedom to pray in our schools?
So this just goes back, I think, to bringing our parents in. Our parents deserve to be the front of their child's education. And they have a right, as an American, to be able to pray. And, you know, we are to respect the values of our parents. It's not the school's job to decide if that's going to be accepted or not.
I think children should be able to pray. I think they should be able to write book reports about their faith. I think they should be able to discuss it with their friends at the lunch hour or at recess or after-school events. And I will uphold that as best I can. I mean, I think those are probably allowed. I'm not sure of our policy on that. But yeah, I would make sure the policy says that they can indeed talk, pray, write, and be Christians, or Muslims, or Jews, or any religion.
Our students 100% have their First Amendment right to be able to pray anywhere they'd like to pray, with whomever they'd like to pray, and in whatever faith. In fact, we already do that in District 49 schools. It's already permitted. We either have to allow all groups or no groups. And for example, at the school my children attend, Falcon High School, we have a fellowship of Christian athletes. It's been there since I taught there, actually. And even before then, there's also a Young Believers Club. There's a fellowship of Christian athletes at Falcon Middle School. There are also groups of students who participate in Mormon activities at some of our schools. As long as we respect each group of students' right to believe what they wish, and we protect every student's right to do that, then we are all okay.
Okay. Deborah, you'll take this one first. How are you gonna hold the superintendent accountable?
Wow, that's a big one. You know, I gotta say, one of the things that really bothered me with our superintendent was the fact that he pretty much said 80% of our students are stuck in public education. And then to go ahead and push forward curriculum that is questionable. Very questionable. Also, this curriculum, no. The school districts have contracts with these curriculum companies. And many times, these curriculum companies want proprietary or copyright clauses in the contact, or in the contract. And that severely, severely limits what parents can find out. Also, a lot of this stuff is behind password-protected stuff online. And, you know, I just think as a superintendent, you shouldn't be hiding things from the parents. The parents need to see this stuff. They need to decide for themselves if this is the school you want to go to. So I think policy, in order to make sure parental rights, transparency, and decent curriculum would be the way to do it.
The way you hold your superintendent accountable is by setting goals for the year and holding them accountable for achievement of those goals through the evaluation process. That's the way everyone is evaluated in their employment. Do I agree that curriculum should be transparent? That was a bit of a segue, 100%. However, I can say that as a parent of students in coordinated, district-operated schools, I get to read every single thing my kids see at Falcon High School. Every single PowerPoint that is presented to my children in class is on their Schoology account, which I also have a parent account to. Every chapter in the book they're reading is on Schoology, and I can read it too. So we are really working hard at making sure that that transparency is there. I can't speak about schools my children don't attend. But I can say, as a parent, at both Falcon Middle and Falcon High, literally, I can see the notes. So there's a great deal of transparency. In fact, far more than our parents had, because we weren't bringing our textbooks back and forth every day from school and having them read it. But literally, I was sitting with my son who's catching up in a class, and we were reading his world history textbook together. So when my children were in health class, I read every health lesson with them. If there was something I wanted them opted out of, all I had to do was say, "I'd like my child opted out of this lesson." So it's there. But it's there for the parents, because the parents are the ones who have access to their students' information under FERPA.
So accountability is the most important job of the school board. The superintendent is to be held accountable for the policies that are in place with the board. A way that we can do that is to make sure we're being consistent on checking that those things are being met, making sure that the criteria and the job duties of the superintendent are being met. And not just being met in some places, but in every single place in our district, in every single school, for every single child.
Okay. Marie, you will take this question first. I will admit that this is a selfish question for myself. I want to congratulate the brilliant audience member that sent this question in. I probably would've worded it a little different, but let's see what happens. Do you think it's more important to only focus on American history or teach more of the Constitution in order to teach the rising generation how to be free and maintain freedom? Whoever wrote that, you're brilliant. I'm just saying.
You need both. One without the other doesn't provide the context. It also doesn't demonstrate the struggle we've made as a nation and the progress we've made to live up to that ideal. The reality is, it's an ideal. And we, as human beings, are not perfect. Only God is. And so we will always be reaching for that ideal. As the parent and guardian of an adult with a disability who is continually navigating services, that's the area that actually has the least rights in our community, and that we struggle to continue to meet the ideal. But we have to know what that ideal was. And we have to look at, how did we confront it when we didn't meet it in the past? And how do we continue to grow? And because of that, I think we need both the Constitution and American history. The Constitution is a part of the history. I've actually read all of the Federalist Papers and all of the founding documents myself as well. That was my favorite class in college, even though I was a science major, was looking at those founding documents and the formation of our country. But I think we need to do a good job on both. And I can say, having had kids go at least through the Falcon Zone, we did the Bill of Rights quite a bit, and we talked about the Constitution quite a bit in every single level. So at elementary, we did it multiple years. In middle school, we hit it several times. And then in high school, we hit it at least twice. My kids particularly enjoy certain ones, like trying to insist that freedom of speech also applies to them in my home. And I say, "Sorry, my house is not a democratic republic." So, you know, we have to talk about where those rules actually apply, which would not be inside my house, versus where you have those rights.
I feel that the Constitution should be taught to every American, every student that sits in our schools. We want our kids to be able to, as adults, step into this world as a citizen, able to know their rights, know how to be successful in their lives as contributing to our societies. And also, we, I do think we do also need American history, because how are we going to have future citizens that care about our country without teaching them patriotism, without teaching them what their country is? And how are we gonna move forward as a country if our kids don't even know our Constitution? So I think it's vital to have both, so that they know what was done for them to have the freedoms and rights that they have now as an American, and how to continue to keep those freedoms and rights in their adult lives and for future generations.
I think they need a little bit of both. Mostly Constitution. We have got to get back to the Constitution. Interestingly enough, our state constitution, Article 9, Section 16, gives local school boards control over the selection of textbooks, which means curricula as well. We need American history that is patriotic. And we need to instill in these kids the knowledge to be able to be self-governing, to be able to look at the Constitution, know what's right, know what's wrong. Look at history, know what's right, know what's wrong. And they have to learn how to self-govern. We're not gonna be there to do that for them. So patriotic American history, yes, 100% all the way. Constitution, state and federal, 100% all the way.
Striving to become a more perfect union. All right. This one will be in with Raylene. How will you ensure you listen to all members of the community and all political beliefs?
So I have actually talked to and communicated with many of our community members. I do feel that as a board, you are essentially the governing of the schools. And everybody has a right to their way of thinking. I do feel that it's important to hear out everyone, hear out all concerns, and then gather information to make informative decisions based on the board's policies.
We need to listen to everybody. We need to discuss with not only the other board members, but spouses, friends, all that. I have talked with many people out there that don't like the direction the schools are going. I've talked to many out there that do like the direction the schools are going. But we've gotta listen to them, and we've gotta give them the dignity to know that they've been heard and not try and shut them down and hold them back with policies that, for instance, have two different areas early in a meeting and at 11 o'clock at night to address their board. Nobody should be at a board meeting at 11 o'clock trying to be heard.
She just asked me to repeat the question.
Sir, I did.
Guess what I've done, Ann? I've moved on. All right.
I've got it, actually.
All right. I appreciate that, because you just saved me. I'm on camera, looking bad right now.
I just, I got going down a rabbit hole as I was listening to others. So one of the ways you listen to all voices is by engaging with all groups, which is why all of these forums are important. It gives you an opportunity to meet different parts of our community. Also, using the tools that are available to a board to make sure that we're hearing from multiple voices, because it's very easy to be well-meaning but still end up only within your circle, both just based on where your kids are going to school or where you live in the community. And so utilizing tools that reach out to a broader audience within the District 49 community to make sure we're getting that feedback is an important part of decision-making. It's a part of why the voice of the community and voice of the workforce were designed originally and implemented by the board was to help provide more information, which means decisions take longer because you're waiting to get more information from people, but that is a piece of it. I actually want to compliment the current board. They doubled the number of people who could speak to the board by doing what they did with their time. It used to be 10 people could speak for a total of 30 minutes. Now, remember, everybody's part-time unpaid volunteers up there. They're giving up their night to do business. They're giving 30 minutes to their community to speak. When a lot of people started showing up, they cut the time to two minutes per person, but they added 20 slots. So that meant 20 people got to speak instead of 10. And I was someone who did stay frequently for the later one if I had something that I felt they needed to hear from me.
And Debra, you'll take this one first. This person asked a couple really good questions. I'm only gonna ask one of them. Elaborate on your views on SEL. Is there anyone in the room that does not know what SEL stands for? Social Emotional Learning.
Social Emotional Learning, I have looked into quite a bit. I have seen a lot of social justice in social emotional learning. Now, I will say there is some good character things that they have in some of those programs. However, I feel that parents are the ones to teach these skills. Now, if you want to teach basic civility, if you want to teach study skills, that's fine. But we're running into questions like, you know, in their little sharing groups, what social justice topic would you like to discuss this year? Gender, race, you know? The whole gamut, you know? I just think that those things are the things parents should share. You know, if you go out there and you see a transgender or you, excuse me, or you know of a gay person. We've had gay people in schools forever. And nobody's been shut out or anything like that. So, excuse me. The social and emotional learning just, it takes a lot of time. The social and emotional learning, just, it takes a lot of time. You go in and you try and see the books. They tell you, "Well, we're using this." They show you some cherry-picked stuff and send you on your way, but you never see the stuff that's online. You never see actually what the teacher is talking about. I know Marie has had a pretty good run of being able to see her students, but the taxpayers don't get to see that. We don't get to see what we're paying for. And the social emotional learning is just not something I want to pay for. I want to pay for our kids to read, to write, to do math, to become self-governing, and science and all that stuff. They don't need this stuff. The parents do it, the families do it, and it needs to stay with them.
Social emotional learning is a giant category, and I think you need to look at what's happening specifically in our schools before you apply that label. First and foremost, we have a Department of Defense grant around resiliency training, essentially, which the military uses to support families like mine when their family member has injuries and becomes disabled or is deployed, as my husband was 11 times, you know, while I was raising my kids in the beginning. So the military has recognized that it's an important stabilizing factor for military families that allow their children to better engage in school and therefore achieve. Therefore, the Department of Defense helped pay for some of the programming District 49 has. I have actually read the entire curriculum at Falcon High, because I'm on the sack as a parent. It was available to any parent who wanted to see it. There wasn't anything like that in it. It were things like helping my son, who has autism, learn to make eye contact and shake a hand appropriately and interact with people appropriately. That's part of special education and is social emotional learning and is required by his individualized education plan, so that maybe he'll be employable someday. It is also something like capturing kids' hearts, which is used in multiple charter schools throughout our city, which again, has shown that when teachers build relationship with students by simply greeting them when they come into the building, asking kids to share good things with one another, and building connection, the sense of belongingness again drives up test scores. Those are the kinds of programs that are being invested in in D-49, and I think wholesale condemning it without looking at what's happening at our schools is unfair. I also know that some programs have names that get confused, so there was a long time where people were saying $300,000 was being spent on Johnson's Renaissance. That was not true. Renaissance is the STARCE 360 testing that helps the district progress monitor so that they know whether the kids are ready to take C-Mass. So there's a lot more that goes into it, and I think we need to be careful how we apply terms. And then, yes, parents need to be involved in their schools, and schools need to be involved and engaged with parents to ensure that the programming and support that's available for our kids is what families in that specific school want for their kids.
So SEL, it does have a lot of aspects to it. What sells it is, we all want our kids to learn how to share. We want our kids to learn how to be kind. We want those things. What we don't want is to plant seeds in our kids' heads about what they're going to think about social justice issues that may not necessarily line up with what they're learning at home, with their family values, and with their parents. We can get all of those. We can get respectfulness. We can get kindness. We can teach all those things, and we want those things for our kids. We can do that through character building, without having to ask them, "What is sharing?" We tell them, "What is sharing?" Just having a cut-and-dry foundation for our kids, so they're not confused. And with those things, you will get what SEL is sold for. We want our kids to have those attributes, but we don't want to teach them what to think, and we don't want to go against our family values. And I think that SEL does pave avenues to, that might not agree with what every kid is learning at home.
Okay, we're going to take two more from the audience. I'll begin with Marie on this one. Do you support or oppose the District 49 MLO ballot item?
I support it, and I support it because I spent a long time looking at tax law and school funding when I was on the board the last time. And I know, for example, that although my property values skyrocketed and therefore my taxes went up, the money the district got from that does not. So the state has a seesaw formula, basically. They have a set number that they say you should have, you know? I don't know the exact number right now, but let's just, for easy sakes, say $10,000 a kid. So if they say you're supposed to have $10,000 a kid, and your mill, minimum, your maximum mills that the state make you charge your taxpayer raise $5,000, the state sends you $5,000. Now your property values go up. You get to collect $7,000. The state says, "Oh, oh, oh, but you're only supposed to have 10." So now they only send you three. So in the end, it doesn't matter that my individual taxes went up. The amount of money our district gets did not. We cannot compete with districts that have mil-over-rides in place for operational expenses if we're not willing to pass one here. D-20, D-38, D-11 all have them. That's why they can pay their teachers more than we can pay ours. We have to invest more of a local share. We also have a higher percentage of money coming from the state. If you want local control, you need your money to come locally. The more money we get from the state and the federal government, the more say they get in how we run our schools, because all they have to say is, "Oop, we won't write you the check." The more money we provide to our budget, the less we get from them, the more control we have. So those are two of the reasons I support it. As someone who taught as well and who holds a master's degree, being someone with a master's degree in science, under $50,000 a year, when I know I could have hired in at 80, right out of college for something else, comparatively gets people to leave the field in teaching fairly quickly, once they have a family. And we need that to stop happening, too. We need the good people to stay. We need them to be able to afford to stay.
I do not support the MLO, and here's the reasoning. I've been out talking to our voters and our community members, and it's hard right now. Our people are struggling, and I feel that it would just add more hardship to our community members and our taxpayers. I would like to work within a budget that we already have and collaborate with our board and our administration superintendent to see what we can do with the already existing budget that we have for our teachers. Maybe at later times, there's times for things like that from our community, but right now is a time of hardship, and our community is struggling, and I don't want to cause any more hardship on them.
I do not support the MLO. My reasoning are, we can cut our budget a little bit. We have 19 of those social emotional learning programs that we were just talking about. I don't think we need 19 social emotional programs. Also, the National Center for Education statistics stated that from 2000 to 2019, our administrators increased by 88%, when our teachers and our students only increased by eight. Also, according to the Department of Education, the Colorado Department of Education, 79.6 of our 7th grade students were not proficient in math. Until we get some better grades, I just don't think that deserves a raise. Also, we have our own business. There is no one under the sun that gets a 7% raise every year for seven years, and then if they reach a certain point, it's permanent. It's ridiculous. It's too much. 7% cost-of-living raise? I don't think so. Our workforce readiness is not there. We, you know, our graduation rates, dropout rates, all the mean scale scores that they have, we've been in the red since 2016. So, you know, if you want a raise, you gotta increase what you're doing first.
Okay, so each one of you has at some point tonight talked about your faith, your belief system. So this last question is in that vein. As a believer or a church core, how does your faith carry into the values and decisions you make on a secular school board? And we'll begin with Raylene.
Like I said earlier, when we first started, I used the Bible as my foundation for my morals, for my decisions. I use the Bible to determine right and wrong, and I will use that in every decision that I make for our schools, for our kids. I just use it as our foundation. That's my moral compass.
My husband and I have just always had God in our hearts and God in our lives. As far as transferring it to the secular school, I would argue that the big rocks that we have on the wall are all biblical principles. And staying with those, you kind of are following the Bible. And you kind of are following what God says to do, to trust people, to make all feel welcome. All of the things that we have up there are biblical, whether they want to admit it or not.
My faith is my driving factor. My core value that comes from that, that leads into secular interaction, is that understanding and respect for the dignity and sacredness of every individual and trying to live up to that. Jesus Christ only ever got angry at the hypocrites. Everyone else, He greeted with compassion and love and invited and waited for them to come, and that's one example for me. The other, one of my heroes growing up, who's still a hero now in heaven, Saint Mother Teresa, four foot 11. That woman lived her faith and served others in a country where her faith was not predominant. She didn't refuse to serve those who didn't believe the same. She served them with love, and with that love and understanding, she converted more to Christianity than many other in their same time period. And she stood up to the UN and told them exactly what she thought. She had no problem telling them what the culture of life should look like. I think both of those, to me, are how we interact and we lead. And then we respect, because we won't always be in places where we're in the majority, and if we show that respect, we also get that respect back.
Okay, everyone, please give them a hand. Thank you all, to all three of you. So before I release them, and I want to tell a very quick story, and this is not to lead anyone anywhere, it's just what happened. So about three weeks ago, I walked into a local donut shop with my son and got a half dozen donuts. I know I need to cut back on the donuts, and half the room is green with that sentiment, but decided to stop and get donuts. The gentleman behind, there was only one person there working, he was probably in his mid-20s, and my total was $12.50. No, it's just a lot for donuts, but these are really good donuts. $12.50. I proceeded to pay in cash, and I gave this young man a 10, two singles, a quarter, two dimes, and a nickel. I gave him exact change. So I think he figured out the 10 and two singles pretty quickly, but he stared at the quarter, the two dimes, and a nickel for about five or six seconds. Then he proceeded to pick up each coin and drop it back in his hand, one at a time. He had to count it. Now, most of the people in this room have grown up, you know, you're probably a little older than this young man was, or a lot older, if you were me, and if you looked down in your hand and saw two dimes, a nickel, and a quarter, your brain instantly says 50 cents. And unfortunately, I think when she talked about some of the results, when Debra talked about some of the results, unfortunately, that is what we're getting in abundance of coming out of our school systems. I pray that as I release the three of you to go to your tables, that you will work tirelessly, if elected, to make sure another kid never has to try and figure out a quarter, two dimes, and a nickel. So you may head to your tables. I'll be releasing everyone here shortly. So if you have questions for them, all three of them will be at a table out in the foyer. Thank you again for being here. We greatly appreciate you giving us the time today. Thank you. And everyone, please give them a hand. I probably should have saved the story for after they were gone, but I think it was important that they hear it as well. And so thank you all for being here, for those of you that are online joining us. We want to thank you for being with us tonight. Tomorrow night, we will be hosting District 11 at, I'm sorry, Radiant Church on Maisland. That's Radiant Central. We will also be hosting District 20, and that will be held at Caris Christian Center. You know, if I wasn't entertaining enough to you tonight, just wait till tomorrow night. And so that will be at Caris Christian Center. And then, of course, on Friday, at CFAN Southwest, we'll be hosting District 2 school board forum. So if any of you live in any of those school boards, you have friends, family, grandchildren in any of those districts, we'd love to have you invite the parents of those children or grandchildren to that forum, and those interested, if they're an interested grandparent or an interested just civilian, right? Someone like me that just wants to hear how those that are seeking to get our votes think. Make sure you're out there tomorrow and Friday. If you live in District 11, of course, again, I mentioned that Radiant will be hosting that one, Radiant Church on Maisland. With that, I would like to dismiss you all. Please remember that there are some materials on the back table as you walk out. Feel free to grab any of those, and the Church Voter Guides will be available on churchvoterguide.org on Sunday. And then the Truth and Liberty Guides are actually in print, and they're on the table on the back. Please go greet the candidates and ask them any additional questions that you may have. Again, we love you, we appreciate you. Have a great evening.